Guys, ready?
Yep.
Excuse me, all right, we will start the February 27th Select Board meeting, and we'll start with the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okey dokey. Manifests.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable manifest of February 20th, 2023, and the payroll manifest of February 21st, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All approved by John Moran, Donna Danus, and Tony Dumas. Okay, public minutes.
Make a motion to approve the public minutes of February 6th, 2023, as written.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, roll call, vote, please.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Non-public minutes.
And I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes of February 6th, 2023, as, did you have any edits? Nobody? All right, as written.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, roll call, vote, please.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Buzzing along. Reports from committees?
We didn't have a planning board meeting, because there just didn't have one. The next one is scheduled for, I believe, the 7th or so.
Okay.
Which, we'll figure out that there. And then obviously, there is no budget meeting, because.
Because they're done.
And CIP, they're all done, too.
Yep. The only thing to report on Marston is that we are currently in the process of putting together designs and material costs to get dugouts out there. And so, we're looking at that.
And just to remember, too, we need to talk about the excess money the 300th committee might have left.
Yes.
We can do with that.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. Okay, that's it for committees.
I believe the 300th money will have to go to next year's town meeting.
Right, well, what the fund is, what it is, just so people are aware.
But that has to go to town meetings to talk about what.
Change the purpose. In other words, the purpose is for the 300th, and so it can be used for something else.
Yep.
Right.
Just to give you a heads up, John, thank you for that warning. There will be a warrant article on ways to use that money.
For next year?
Yes.
Okay. It can't be for your birthday party.
Damn! Are you kidding me? Damn! Okay, I'll revise anything.
Try again, Steve. Try again.
But this is 300.
That is a true statement. Okay, Town Administrator's report.
Okay, first thing, there is a green CAD for sending out to remind people to vote. It links to a site on the website, which has information on voting. You can get there either by typing the link into your computer or using that OCR code. Is that okay to send out? I just need consensus.
Looks good to me, and thank you to Kelly Delaire for working on that, to get that together and prepared and done.
Yeah, Kelly did a good job on that.
Yep.
The next item, the cost of water softener and sediment trap at the fire station was $4,745. The cost to winterize the water line into the town office was $2,860. Incidentally, it froze again, so we had to thaw it Saturday, but they finished fixing it. They had been waiting, because the foam they used would have gassed off, and they didn't want to do it when the kids were here all last week.
Is there a warranty with that?
A warranty? No. How that should have been done, when you did the kitchen, you should have trench the floor and had it come up inside underneath, instead of up on the outside. That's just.
We can go on about everything we should have did.
Yep, so, they've done a lot of insulation. The plan is, when you put the building around the outside, above-ground oil tanks, that it would enclose that as well. Now, that wouldn't be heated, but it would be mitigated somewhat for temperature.
That strip of drywall, where it.
Yes, was cut out.
Where the pipe is, right. When they put that back up, rather than putting drywall back and spackling it, can they, you know, clean up the edges and put some type of a removable panel?
Yeah, look at it. That's.
You know what I mean, just, yeah.
I think they put.
That way, if they have to get back in there, they're not destroying the sheetrock again.
Right.
Is that the plan, John?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't know if it's removable, but they didn't try to spackle it and everything. They put a panel up on the outside.
Yeah, with accessible screws or something, just so that it's reachable.
Yeah, I hope they didn't glue it. I don't know, there's a panel there.
Yeah.
But you're right, that would make sense.
Doesn't sound like they're, doesn't sound like what you're asking for, though.
Well, it may have been, we'll have to look at it.
I'll take a peek later.
Okay.
There is an additional expense coming in for replacing the well pump at this building, and the, the building expendable trust has an uncommitted balance of $6,735. There is also additional work going to be needed off the boilers, because the hot water tank failed, got full of sediment and everything, so that has to be replaced, too.
Here.
At the fire station.
Fire station.
So, what I'm asking is that the board approve $4,745 from the town buildings maintenance expendable trust, request the trustees for that money. I'll make it a separate motion, so that's going to be the first motion I'm asking for. You could, the other option is take it out of APPA, or take it out of the operating budget for this year.
So you're asking for the $2860 to come from the operating budget to cover the winter, to cover winterizing, the water line coming into this building, and then the $4,745 to come from the building maintenance expendable trust fund.
And you want us to write, you want us to read it off as two different things?
Yeah, I just got to make three motions out of this, but yes, if you want to make one motion.
What's the third?
The third one is the additional work at the fire station for the hot water heater, to have that come out of APPA.
And that, what's the cost on that?
That's going to be close to $6,000.
And what are they doing? They're just flushing the tank?
No, they have to replace the whole thing and reconnect it. The boiler inspectors came today for the manufacturer, and they worked and worked, and they couldn't get it to work correctly, so they've got to take unrelated, this is in addition, they've been replacing pots in that boiler room, they should have just basically replaced everything in there.
All right, so here's my question for you.
Okay.
You get four line items there, building expendable trust, purpose, withdrawal, and balance.
Yes.
Balance, is that for APPA balance?
No, this is the expendable trust to tell you, the chat shows you what we've already spent.
I just want to make sure that that's, because, okay, that's fine.
This is not APPA, and then the $4,745 would also come out of that line for the expendable trust from the trustees of the trust funds. If the voters support it, there's $90,000 going in, that would then give you money for the projects that need to be done. In particular, we have the wastewater line, that could be $50,000 here in this building, and we have the oil tank issue, so those two projects already, we are aware, that are going to be eaten into the $90,000, that's going into the expendable trust. But that's, that's why I suggested the $4,745 come out of the expendable trust, that the $2860, we could take out of operating, and then the additional money that we've been, we've been using APPA to pay for the fire heating system and everything up to the fire station, so that's why I was going to take that out of that. I can wait for that motion until we get to the 13th, but when I have an exact number, I thought I might have the invoice today, but I don't.
And refresh my memory, what was the, the operating budget maintenance line, what was the total on that?
I don't have that number with me today, I'm sorry. Bring the right folder. I can find out rather quickly. I thought we had like $30,000 or $40,000 in that, that line.
Thoughts, guys?
Well, we got to fix it, but we should definitely spread the cost around, because we don't want to, we don't want to empty the town building maintenance trust, you know, before the first quarter of the year is over.
I'll tell you right now, right, might not be popular, but the fire station doors, it's been nuts. They haven't had them on there for 16 years, or however that building is. I think we should wait till we get the $90,000 from the voters.
That's already been committed.
Yeah, it's already, you've already voted to approve that one. This is just a record of what you've already voted. You voted for that one on the 24th of January.
I guess for that one, but okay. No, we have to go for it, so.
But, so the, the, again, John, just trying to make sure I understand all of this, the additional expense for replacing the well pump at the, at this building, that's the one you want to come out of APPA, and that's not, that's the one you don't have the cost for yet?
No, the, the hot water tank attached to the boiler up to the fire station is one I don't have a number for either, but the well, I would think, would come out of either the expendable trust or the operating budget, when we get the well cost, because it's for this building.
So you're talking about?
Got two unknown expenditures in this.
Okay.
Here.
So I don't think we should approve unknown expenditures, I don't know what you guys think.
No, we need a hard number.
Yeah.
Yeah, so all I'm asking tonight is the $4,745 from the building maintenance expendable trust, and then the $2860 is just going to come out of the operating budget.
So you're only asking for two things?
Yes.
I thought it was.
I thought you said three.
It was initially, but I backed off, because I don't have a good, solid number. I'd rather have the solid number, I agree with you.
That's where I get confused.
Okay. Sorry. I changed my mind in the middle of it.
Got to let us know when that happens.
Yes, I understand.
We good, then?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion to the Select Board to approve expending $4,745 from the town building maintenance expendable trust fund for the replacement costs of the water softener and sediment trap at the fire station.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, roll call, vote.
John Moran, yes.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas. And I'll also make a motion to approve spending $2,860 out of operating, out of the operating budget maintenance line for the failed tank off the furnace at the fire station.
No, the water line, winterizing the water.
Ah, correction, so, for the water line here in the town hall.
Yep.
So, $2,860 for the water line repair here at the town hall.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, roll call, vote.
Aye, John Moran.
Aye, Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Okay, next item is copiers. The copier lease for the town hall is.
You had another, what were our numbers?
We'll do that when they come up under, they're on the agenda later on.
Okay.
They're at 7:30 on the agenda. The copiers, the copier lease for the town hall is running out. The fire station has an old copier that we own, but you won't be able to get parts for it much longer. The police department has a copier that we own, it's somewhat slow, so the plan is to do musical chairs, to get rid of the one at the fire station, junk it, to take the one in the police station, move it to the fire station, to take the one in the town business office and move it to the police station, it's bigger and faster, and it's still got life left on it, and then to lease a new one for the business office.
So we're still only leasing one?
We're leasing one.
What's the change in the cost of lease?
The lease drops, costs, the, the lease cost drops, but the maintenance cost goes up. You pay a maintenance cost based on the cost per copy, based on the age of the machine. Right now, we have one machine that is at the higher lease rate for being an older machine, and, I got a folder here for copiers, so, right now, we're paying three-quarters of a cent per copy of what's being done at the police department for black and white, and eight cents for what's being done for color. That's on the police copier, we'll continue that, that's what will happen on the fire station copier, and then here, the maintenance will remain. You're telling me you're paying eight, eight cents a copy page when you do it in color? Color is a lot more expensive, it's one ten times expensive. The reason police make so many color copies are their photos of accidents and things like that, that run up. Half a cent, what, a half a cent for black and white on the new copier, and on what we're currently have, and a nickel for color copies. But what's happening to the lease arrangement is that it's going to drop to, get the number here, it's dropping from $229 a month to, I think the new number is $199.
$199.
Yep, so it's dropping basically $30 a month on the lease. So, you'll have a few more copies at the, at the higher rate, but you're really saving money, because you're paying less on the lease.
But what about the maintenance costs?
The maintenance cost will be the same on the new one as it is on the current one, so there's no change on the maintenance cost.
And the maintenance cost for what ends up at the, is it all one maintenance cost number?
It's all one maintenance contract, and the two older ones will all be at the higher rate I quoted, and this, the one that, we do far more copies in the, right now, the police does $7,787 in color, and the town hall copier does $22,000 in color, and we do about $83,000 copies, black and white, here in the, in the business office. So, yeah, it will be less total, in my opinion, but it does depend somewhat upon how many copies are made at police and fire. If you assume at the same rate that they have been, you're going to be saving money with this new contract.
How long's the contract for?
Five years.
And the price stays flat?
Price stays flat for five years. One of the things you are doing is you're buying out the lease, the value of the copier that is in the business office is considered to be $2,611, so we're buying that for that price, so we're buying that copier, and then it goes into police, and it won't be on the lease, it'll be on the maintenance agreement. I hope I haven't confused things, but, this is what we want to do with copiers, and it won't cost much more, other than, you got the initial buyout cost, that's the only
Just when.
Upfront cost.
I mean, it would have been helpful to have that, all that math underneath this item.
Oh, spread out, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I can see that now that I'm trying to explain it.
Yeah, exactly.
Copy that.
Yeah, it's good one, Steve. So, am I authorized to sign the lease agreement to go to the new copier, and the maintenance agreement on the other two?
We have to do the buyout.
Yep.
The monthly.
Will be less.
The monthly will be less, but the maintenance costs are a little bit higher.
A little bit higher, because the police copier will be at a higher rate.
So I'm sorry, what's the net increase per month? When you factor in all of that?
Okay. Let me just figure it out real quick here. So if the, I just gave the numbers, seven, seven, eight, seven times three cents, one, six, three, three, two. So the, the annual on the color will be, and, the annual on the color will be an additional $233, which would be less than $20 for that. Actually, it's going to be, depending on usage, it will be the same, or maybe a little less or a little more, because $20 more for color copies, you'll be paying in the police department than you are now, and if it's 65 times a fraction of a cent, yeah, and you're saving $30, it's basically a wash.
What is this maintenance, I wasn't here when we probably signed this one five years ago, so my question is made, this means we're paying a maintenance fee, so if anything breaks, they come in and fix it, there's not another expenditure on top of that?
Well, they're paying the toner, they're paying, all we pay for, with the maintenance agreement, all we pay for is electricity and paper. They take care of all the consumables, and that's what the maintenance agreement is paying for, plus any repairs that are needed to keep it operating.
That's exactly what I want to know, so we're out of pocket, nothing except for paper.
And electricity. Yes. Everything else is covered.
That's a pretty standard arrangement.
I haven't rented a copier, so I have no idea what this.
Yeah, yeah.
They probably tell you, you know.
Yeah, the last time I had to deal with a copy vendor, it was about, you know, half a cent a page for black and white, six and a quarter for color, and that was a few years ago, so given inflation, that, it seems reasonable.
And they're charging us enough to cover it, that's why the price is what it is, because they already got a general idea of what we're spending for, they're going to need to spend on it.
Yeah, I mean, when it, when it comes to business-grade printers, I mean, all of that math is mapped out in advance, before you even buy it or rent it, they know exactly what you're going to spend on it from year to year, and, and, you know, with a reasonable amount of certainty, they know when you're going to have to start paying to fix it. It's all, all the math is done in advance, so, it's literally, we're just paying for a service.
Sign away.
Do you need a motion, or are you?
If I could, just authorize it.
Make a motion to the Select Board, authorize the town administrator to sign the, the updated contract for printing services.
Okay. I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, seconded by John Moran, roll call, vote.
Aye, John Moran.
Donna Danus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Okay, next item has to do with the SAU is willing to extend agreement for the town use of the school for after-school care at the same rate they have been, but this time it's for five years, that's something we were after, so we could have some stability in budgeting for recreation.
Courtney liked it. Courtney liked it.
Courtney liked it, yes.
John, did we have a lawyer look at it?
No. I assumed the lawyer had looked at it last time, but.
The lawyer did not look at it last time.
Ah, then, if you want to have the lawyer look at it, I can do so.
I do, I would like that.
Yep, I'll do that.
Only because there were some things in there about liability, and who's responsible for different things, right, and I felt that, personally felt that there was more burden being put on the rec department, so I would just like to have a lawyer, and, and what was the, what's the new, if it's five years, which is fantastic, I love that, what's the notification period?
The, where is it? I've got to find it.
What are we asking the lawyer to particularly look at?
Okay, the.
Just make sure that there's not an unfair amount of liability being placed on the town.
Correct.
I think we should specify, when John talks to the lawyer, this is what we're looking to make sure, this, and not just looking over the document, saying, well, it's a well-written document, it's a.
Plus, plus, it's, it's the town, right? It's two town entities that are making an agreement together, right?
That always works out well.
Yeah, right, I know.
There's a $500 early termination of lease fee, and I'm looking for what the notification period is.
Because one of the concerns that triggered this whole discussion is about the fact that Courtney found out in December, that the new SAU administrator was thinking of putting this program out for bid, which, you know, it's not fair for them to do that to our rec department mid-budget cycle, right, because Courtney has to make commitments and stuff like that. So I just.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I can't find, it was $500, but I can't find the.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the SAU is going to give them sufficient notice in time for proper budgeting.
Yes.
That's all.
I will, I will check that, and I will send it to lawyer and bring it back on the 13th.
Okay.
Speaking of lawyers, we've got a very expensive subpoena we have to respond to, which relates to a lawsuit between the state of New Hampshire and 3M Corporation over PFAS, and because of that, 3M has subpoenaed the records of just about every town with a landfill to know what we found monitoring, and they want copy, they have asked for 48 different types of documents related to anything we have on PFAS, so we're going to, have to pay engineers to coordinate all the monitoring data for the last six years, and we're also.
Is there, our return of getting money from 3M?
No, 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 it's just, we've been subpoenaed as.
Lawyers.
Yeah, we've been subpoenaed by 3M's lawyers.
I mean, if the shoe was on the other foot, and we were asking a law firm for copies of documents, we would be billed for time and a, a fee per page. What, I mean, I'm not opposed to giving them the information, they got a subpoena, but we should be compensated for our time and effort.
When I talked to our lawyer today, that did not seem to be in the cards.
No.
But is there a role?
It's a federal case.
So, do we have to spend legal fees?
Yes.
For that?
Yeah, we're going to spend legal money on it, we're going to spend engineering money on it.
Because it's not just a matter of us collecting documentation.
Correct. And they had asked for a much more complex disclosure, and the attorney says they're going beyond what they can ask, so there are things we don't have to do that they're asking, and she saved us a lot of work just there, in terms of formatting, Bates numbering, and some other things that they wanted. They wanted it, but we don't have to do it, but there is, under federal disclosure laws, we're going to be disclosing, so, I thought I'd just let you know on that one while we were talking lawyers.
Have there been any discussions amongst the towns? Are there any towns that are responding to it any differently than we are, or?
I, I haven't seen it pop up on the listserv, but I suspect it will, it just arrived Friday night, so. I'll keep an eye on it, just let you know. The.
I'd rather see our lawyer come here and talk to us about it, because I don't understand why, if this comes to a $10,000 bill that we have to pay for engineering and all this, and we're getting nothing from it, and we're being subpoenaed, can't we just give them the minimum of what we have, without having to go through all the things? The only information we have.
I'm afraid that's the way it works, but I can.
Well, I would say, listen, this is the information we collected, this is the information we have, this is what, you cipher it, you figure it out. For us to have to go through even more and do all the legwork for them, sounds ridiculous.
Well, we have to do the legwork to sort through what's in our files and what's in CMA's files. CMA has to gather all this information, some of which is electronic, some of which is paper copies, they got to go back through archive stuff, because they've already archived some of the stuff they're going to have to get for us.
So we have to pay them to do that?
Yeah.
Is this, so is this?
When does this have to be done by, sorry?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
22nd of March. Yes, okay.
It just seems.
I've given him the 16th, actually, for CMA, because I want our lawyer to have time to then go over it before they present it to the federal court.
Is this state of New Hampshire against 3M?
Yes. State of New Hampshire sued 3M for PFAS. In part of their defense, 3M is asking all this information of everybody they can in the state.
How many, do you know how many towns there are?
Not yet.
Okay. What, just, what, what is the role of 3M in this? Like, when you think about, we've got this issue up, you know, we've dealt with it up near the recycling center, what is the role of 3M in that?
I assume they're the manufacturers of PFAS, because I can't see why else they'd be suing over PFAS, they were at least, at least the distributors, and maybe the manufacturers.
John, what is PFAS?
Uh, I don't.
It's a very complicated.
It's one of those forever chemicals that gets in the groundwater.
Yeah.
It's a synthetic molecule that can't be, it doesn't biodegrade in the environment, and the human body can't break it down into simpler components, and it's.
Can you see this paragraph right here?
Carcinogenic.
It is perfluoropenatonic acid, perfluorobenahexatonic acid, perfluor, and, and that goes on. It is perfluoropenatonic acid, perfluorobenahexatonic acid, perfluoro, and, and that goes on, all of those are different types of chemicals that are, um.
It's a, it's a big issue in the state.
It is.
It's a big, it's not just a Nottingham ham thing, it's a big issue in the state.
It's actually called a fluorotelometer precursor.
But we're cursing it now.
Yes.
Yes, we are cursing it now.
Again, you did a good job, Steve.
I would, I would just be interested in knowing, like, uh, how other towns are reacting to it. Like, how much time has to be put into looking for what they're asking for? Like, what's the minimum that we can get away with?
Yeah.
Frankly, I think the state should be providing guidance on it, too.
Or if the state wins the lawsuit, towns like us should get a friggin payday out of it.
I agree with you more than, yeah.
That doesn't sound like we're happening.
Let's bring that up to our state rep.
Owen Benzie, we'll have to decide out what he thinks. Okay, uh, so that, uh, we're at seven o'clock. I know you have an appointment, so then I'll continue later.
Okay, so, seven o'clock appointment, Dallas. I just, when you sit down, state your name and your address, please, and if you can do it loudly and clearly, that would be great.
I am Dallas Huggins and three Sherwood Lane.
Kristen Lamb, Conservation Commission, seventeen Garland Road.
Uh, hopefully everyone has signed in. Uh, there's a paper, as you commend to sign in. We need those names for the record.
All right, hi.
So, yes, thank you for your time today. Super appreciative of, um, your time to discuss, uh, the topic of rodenticides, so. I guess, a little bit. Um, I'm Dallas, I'm a licensed wildlife rehabilitator locally, and also on the Nottingham Conservation Commission. And so I wanted to talk to you more about the topic of rodenticides, and since those are being used at the town built, the town, uh, yeah, the town buildings, and, um, some of the alternatives and ways that we could move away from that, and why that's important.
I'm sorry, could I just ask everybody to, um, be quiet, please, because we're just, we're trying to hear her, and we're trying to make sure that the people at home watching can hear her on the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, yes, I wanted to, so I understand the, um, the kind of the reasons, the convenience of rodenticides, but, um, there's just, we know a lot now about the dangers of rodenticides, and so I wanted to go through some of that with you, and, uh, propose that we transition to safer alternatives. So I planned on giving kind of a summary on some of the current findings on these poisons, and then going to next steps as far as safer alternatives, and, and proposing some safer alternatives there.
So just before we do that, for context, can we talk about what we're doing here at the community center now?
John?
Oh, um, I gave you the information, but I will go over it for everyone, just a second.
So, um.
We, we hire a company to come and put bait traps out, which had to, um, the mice go into, they eat the poison, they go back out, uh, they die, and the issue is that, um, they get scavenged by wildlife, and then it, that, um, those chemicals get into the food supply of some animals. What we're using right now is a TT eaten peanut butter bait.
Okay.
And we spend ninety-five dollars a month for that.
Okay, thank you.
And Dallas will get into it, but it's not just, um, wildlife, it actually can, uh, expose domestic animals.
Yeah, just wanted to make the con, you know, the, set the context of what we're doing now and why you guys are concerned.
Yeah, and so, um, anticoagulant rodenticides work by clotting, by preventing the blood from clotting, and from, it results in hemorrhaging internally. And so these rodenticides are intended to, for rodents, of course, but they're all sorts of different impacts, as, uh, John mentioned. They impact a lot further than, than just wildlife, and, well, yeah, go into all of that. But rodents don't die right away from these poisons, so they go outside of the confines of these bait boxes, and then they are entering the environment where they're consumed by a number of other species. And so, uh, I believe the, um, or the ones that we're currently using are second-generation, uh, anticoagulant rodenticides in particular, which, um, are especially lethal because, to unintended victims, because they, um, they last in the tissue for far longer than after the animal dies, and so, um, the, they're, the animal's in a weakened state, it leaves that bait box, and, um, already it's high risk of being consumed by another predator at that point where it's been very, very lethal. But also even after death, if it is, um, a scavenger comes along, it's also, um, has, it's very high content of poison still in its tissues at that point. And so the EPA actually banned consumer sales because of, uh, of, specifically of the second-generation anticoagulant rodenticides, because they have such a high risk to unintended victims. But they've been documented in all types of different species, like, they're very high impact to, uh, raptors, so birds of prey. But all types of mammals, foxes, bears, like weasels, all of the above, it's been documented in globally, just, um, the, the, when they analyze the tissues, finding that those, and different animals have been impacted. And so, in addition to these kind of studies, like, for instance, I'm, as a wildlife rehabber, I've seen these effects time and time again. And, um, and I'm relatively new, whereas if you ask, well.
I'm sitting here, too, because, um, I work at the Center for Wildlife, and I've, um, been doing conservation medicine for, uh, almost two decades, and we typically treat, um, at least twelve hundred, um, birds representing a hundred and fifty species every year, um, and at the center, and then also other organizations, um, have documented, uh, up to eighty to ninety percent of the raptors, or, um, some of the birds tested admitted, have at least trace amounts of, um, the rodenticide in their blood. And if we think about, uh, like a great-horned owl, um, we feed a great-horned owlet that's developing six to eight mice every day. And so if a great-horned owl exists in a habitat, and it's feeding, um, say, two or three young, plus themselves, they're actually hunting twenty-four to thirty rodents every, um, evening. And if you take them out, because a mouse went into a bait trap and then came out, um, you're actually eliminating the real, um, species that can balance that.
We get the problem.
Yeah.
Right? We understand the problem, great. So I think the question is, what are you guys recommending that we should be doing that would be just as effective for us?
Yeah, and I think it's just, uh, the, to the point of like the PFAS and, you know, forever chemicals, it's like, escars were, um, convenient, but it's kind of antiquated, and we're grateful for the BOS and for Nottingham to even be open or understanding that we can move away from that, and Dallas has, um, cost-efficient methods, um, that also will prevent the issues, um, from, you know, from having to pay this company. We noticed that the line item for pest management for our municipal buildings is around sixty-two hundred dollars annually. And so that's like, just throwing those bait traps out, but not actually fixing the problem.
Do they do anything besides the bait traps?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay, yes.
And so, uh, yeah, to go over some of the, the steps, and, uh, so there's lots of different ways to approach, like, there's, we were currently using lethal means, um, where we're actually killing the rodents, but there's also, um, many preventative measures, like pest management companies will even offer services where they'll seal up buildings, they'll come in, like, do an assessment, and find all the different entry points, and be able to seal up the, the premises where, um, the rodents aren't able to enter as readily. There's also a ton of different methods as well, as like trimming vegetation and, and stone barriers, and, um, and, uh, a lot of different methods as far as like just preventative and getting it to be a less desirable situation for the rodent to come in. In addition, there's a ton of different alternative methods and lethal means as well. A lot, like a ton that is just available to, uh, to individuals, like any, any homeowner. Um, and I actually have a, a paper that I will pass out. I, um, only had a couple, but, uh, I can also send through email as well, that lays out all the different means that you can use lethal, like, why is that, um, that are very effective, that are safe for all different, you know, types of animals, because they're not, they don't have the risk of, of being affected by this. And, um, in addition to, yeah, so I was going to go through some different steps of kind of like a proposed, like, next steps as far as transitioning. But my thought is kind of getting, working with the pest management company, what I'd like them to be able to come in and do is get an estimate on both, you know, options. Know what the options are as far as the lethal means, like, for instance, snap traps, that's something that is very cheap and available and can be used, um.
What is a snap trap?
Snap traps are like the old school, put out the snap trap, it's actually considered the most humane, because they die immediately and they don't impact any other.
Okay.
Animal or person.
Yeah.
Another thing to note, too, is these escars can get into water, and obviously a hundred percent of our town is on, uh, well, so. Yeah. Dallas has, I mean, step one is get the, get a company that is an alternative to come in and do, um, just a, a proposal, have an invoice, see if it's, um, close to, or think, thinking obviously a lot less, um, expensive. And then, um, the, the Conservation Commission would be willing to do that, like, host a workday, or even work with different departments to see where, you know, are people leaving food out, you know, are things being tied up for the food pantries? There are, um, cheap alternatives to keep things in bins, um, to create like the less desirable conditions.
Yeah.
And then go with the alternatives to escars, um, annually for maintenance.
Yeah, so, kind of getting them to, to come in, do those assessments, but then also working with the, the select board and, or town administrator to be able to, um, determine what is actually within that budget. I mean, we, we do know actually how much is being spent, so it's helpful to, to have that kind of as a barrier. And be able to determine what is cost-effective in those different services that are provided. And then, as the Conservation Commission, we can kind of make up that difference, like, how can we volunteer, do a volunteer workday to be able to, um, not only raise, um, awareness of these different issues, but to be able to, um, to do some of these extra things, like trimming vegetation, we don't need to hire somebody for, clearly, you know, that's definitely something we could do. And so things like that, and, and kind of assessing how, how much we could, um, stay within the budget, but utilizing pest management services, like, um, and how much would be something that we could just handle, and, and, you know, try and take some of that cost off of the, um, the town.
I think it's, it's, it would be interesting to find out, too, if the person who prescribed the bait boxes did an audit, because that kind of is best practice to look at points of entry, so you can seal them up and have a non-issue or a lease issue. But I think a lot of companies wanna stay in business, or they just throw the bait boxes at someone as a solution. It keeps them utilizing their services.
Do you guys have questions?
I had my house sealed. I had bats and mice. I don't anymore.
I mean, that's the easiest.
But it's, you know, I think you, you pay based on the perimeter of the building, and this building's pretty big, but I mean, it's worth asking.
I don't have a problem, if Conservation wants to take a lead on this, I don't have a problem with it. I'll just know, well, the only issue I'm gonna have is when we come down to the budget, on what it's worth to, to do this, and how much it's gonna be worth. I hope it's feasible, because I think it's a great thing. You know, and I think with the assistance of the Conservation, as they're already volunteering, as it sounds right now. For their time. I'm gonna make sure it's on record for we'll get this on this, so, in two years from now, if we're not there, we'll still have to come find you.
Well, and, and, yeah, I mean, that's a point I wanted to make, I wanna reiterate that, because what I heard you say is that removing vegetation is easy, and that can be done, and the Conservation Commission will do that. It's great to do it once, but three years from now, are you guys still signing on to do that? Because as you've seen, as we've gone through deliberative and everything, we've got a problem just making sure that, you know, the plumbing is working, having a resource to take care of that here.
I think we, we were chatting, like, I think we would love to, I don't know what, like, the maintenance policy is, but we could work that into the maintenance policy, where the Conservation Commission has a workday every year, and then it's like in there that the town of Nottingham doesn't wanna utilize the escars, and so, and it's like on record, or, you know, it's in perpetuity, regardless of who's sitting here.
I think no one wants us to use those.
Yeah.
But, like with everything, if your plan is five times more than the plan that's going on now, then trying to explain to people why we're doing something is where the part comes. It's not that everybody wants to do the right thing, but when it comes down to financially, people say, "Well, I guess I'll do the other way, might not be as good, but it'll get the job done," and that's what's gonna happen. So again, as much volunteers you guys could do, and if you wanna lead the way on this, hey, again, I'm not gonna object one bit about getting rid of using the pesticides and going to the natural way of doing it. You know, but, you know, that's something where, you know, I don't think it's fair to make the town employees that are here to start stepping up, doing the natural way where, you know, you, we gotta balance how this is gonna work out.
Yeah.
You know?
So, I have a recommendation. We have a new town administrator starting in about a month. My recommendation to you guys is to give her some time, give her about a month, and then come in and talk with her. And talk about an approach for, um, you know, doing an evaluation, right? And then, uh, between the work that you do with some of the guidance from the town administrator, come to the select board with a recommendation. Does that work for you guys?
If you, you also asked to meet with our, uh, exterminator company, I don't know what you wanna call us, is that the, whatever word, right? You know, you obviously might know of other companies?
Yeah. Yes.
You know, I mean, that's information we need to know.
I do actually have, I've talked to people already, and, um, the next step is to assess the building, so, um, it would just be a matter of organizing, where having somebody have access to the building to be able to see that, and they do free estimates, so it's just a matter of, of, um, you know.
So I'm just asking you to wait till.
That's easy.
If, I, I mean, I'd let them have access to the building, but then they bring their report to Ellen and talk to her.
Right. Well, we, we first have to have a report of what it is before we go into the, I mean, as much as we wanna say right now, we're gonna change it, but until we have a, a plan.
Yeah.
Uh, and a cost plan and all that, we're, I mean, this is the opening stage of getting the ball rolling in the right direction, really, is what we're doing.
Totally.
You know, so.
So who will do the evaluation of the building?
It would be the pest management company themselves. So one of the ones.
The one that we have now.
No, it, so one of the ones that I'm talking to is Pest End.
So this is only, one thing I'm concerned about, is we've got somebody doing it now, right? And I don't know that it's fair to them to bring somebody in to start evaluating what they're doing.
I think it depends on, like, how were they.
Well, we don't know.
Age, you know, like, did they?
We don't know, and that's why.
Because that's why I was talking about best practice.
I understand, but we, we don't know, none of us have that information.
Shouldn't we ask the, the pest company now to be doing the same thing that they're gonna be asking the other company to?
Correct, that's fair, that's fair. I just don't want you guys saying, "Okay, we're gonna see what this company can say and do, and we know they're gonna do better than this other company that hasn't even had a chance to be a part of the conversation."
Yes, I'm, so, a lot of time, there's some, some companies will specifically only do like rodenticides, for instance, and so, that would, I would love to know the company, because I mean, for me, it's absolutely not about the company. In fact, I wanted to have multiple companies come in to find the most cost-effective option, so.
I don't want somebody just going in and starting to talk to our vendors. That, that's the only reason I wanna wait until we have the town administrator to guide the process. Because I agree with you guys a hundred percent, but I just think it's not fair to one of our vendors to all of a sudden have somebody that they haven't dealt with come in and start asking questions. That's where I'm coming from. So I would just like the new town administrator to be able to guide that process, and it's better if they call up the existing company and say, "Here's what's going on, here's some of the concerns, we wanna do an evaluation," right? So, I just think that's fairer to an existing vendor.
Yes, and just for the record, too, like, it wouldn't be assessing their work, because it's really just like, I just, my, you know, goal is to more identify the areas around that are entry points and so on, and then see, you know, just get any kind of estimate to start comparing, but it isn't like, "Hey, are they doing it right?"
You have to give them the chance to do the same thing, and you're making assumptions that they can't. So that's why, I, again, I maintain it's not fair to just go out and start asking another company to do an evaluation when we have somebody in place.
Yeah, that important, like, the. Yeah, the important, like, the, the important page that we all want to be on is that if we, if it's cost effective, we all don't want to utilize escars. And I think it would be great if that company does, does provide that service. I think they might, they might not, but that would be good to find out, because I think a best, a best practice company like Tony's looks for holes and seals it up so that you don't have to deal with it.
Okay. With all due respect, we're running behind.
Oh, yes.
Glad you guys came in, this is really good. John and Tony, are you okay with what I proposed in terms of giving the new TA some time to get in position and then having them work through her?
I'm also on this board for two more years, and I'm running, well, I'm not running, I'm just on the two more years. So please keep in contact with me as our two fellows are not going to be with us, and again, it's a long way, but whatever. So, I don't want this to be dropped, so please make sure that I'm in contact with what you're doing, so that I can keep this going in the right direction.
Thanks, yes.
If I were here, I'd be saying the same thing.
Yeah. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gonzalez. Hi, have a seat, I just need you to state your name and your address, please.
My name is Frank Gonzalez, 113 Kelsey Road here in Nottingham. My wife and I have 45-year residence. Tonight's meeting is just an informing, information meeting for you folks. The content is these forever chemicals, specifically for me, it's salt in my water. My well is 25 feet from the road, it's a dug well. My neighbor's well is in the same situation, 25 feet from the road. In this documentation, the chloride situation is the same as Camp Lejeune, and Camp Lejeune is a mess, as you know. Our chloride rates are still within acceptable norms. Last year, there was 81 times where the salting taken place on our 600-foot road. And I'd estimate more than a ton of salt was applied to that road last year. This year, they've already covered it 27 times with salt heavily and right, right through my driveway. My driveway is about 10 feet, where the salt ends is about 10 feet to my well. So I've got a problem that may be developing, and the documentation that I presented tonight will back that up. And so, in, in chloride, the norm for a pristine area is 30 milligrams per liter. I'm at 202 this year, but I pumped out about 5,000 gallons of water trying to feed my garden. My garden, my beans this year come up maybe a foot, they used to be over 2 feet tall. So I think the salt has gotten into my, and I'm talking to UNH about plans. So I've got a problem with my garden, with my well, I washed my car, I've got white spots all over my windshield. So I think I've got a, a growing problem, and this is all part of the documentation I have in this package. I've been on the fire department, and I know the police department as well, and in years past, there's been no problem with transportation on roads. Johnny Fern will always use sand, not salt. And last year, you, you folks decided that this should be a, a low-salt zone, but when they come through the first time, do it nine times on a, on a one-inch snowfall, I'm not impressed.
Just curious about, curious about your comment about they've used salt on your road 27 times this year?
Yes.
I mean, they haven't, we haven't even had enough incident, you know, events?
They'll do it before the storm, during the storm, and after the storm. One time they went down, they plowed three times and then left. But, but they didn't sand or salt. Then they came back as soon as it got dark, they salted, because I live so close to the And I'm not the only one that's aware of this, my neighbors got the same problem, and we're both disturbed that they're salting so much. The roads basically are white this year and it's not from snow. Okay, as part of my presentation in this package is a little blurb on salt poisoning. And I believe in, in my research, which I'm still conducting, salt poisoning, if you ingest a half a gram per pound of body weight, it'll kill you. And it is 454 grams per pound, and the weather's getting up, and I don't know if those levels are real or not. I am working with DES Water, Water Conservation, Steve Landry, and Steve has indicated that they're presenting legislation on what can be used and salted. The city of Dover has a problem with their, one of their primary wells, they're at 330. I talked to Mike Nardell this morning, and he said they're at 330 in one of their wells near the Spalling Turnpike. The state is going to replace that well. If it's a town, if it's a town road, the town is responsible for the repairs. And they're not cheap. I talked to Skilling, they've already done them in Nottingham, but they did it for the state. So before we get into any, any difficulty, I'd like to request no salt be applied to Kelsey or to West Lane for the rest of this year, and maybe we can stop this from becoming a catastrophe. The aquifer is not, salt is a forever chemical, and it just settles in the ground. This year, I, I've measured some of it, I've got some samples here. This one little salt pellet is .4 ounces, and they spread it out like crazy. As a matter of fact, they also use aggregate with rocks. I found this at the end of my driveway, my snowblower won't chew that up. So I've got an issue with the town, the escars, the quality, and the quality, it's not just myself, but it's the entire neighborhood, we're in an aquifer. We've got a pond out back, we're not seeing the pollywogs we used to see, there's some changes going on. So I just want you to be aware that there's a problem coming. Last year, you said it was a low-salt area, and they're not doing that at all, and John knows that. We've met and talked a little bit, but nothing seems to be happening. So you haven't exactly met my goals, I started saving my well, and it can be very expensive. Skilling tells me we're talking about $50,000 to put a well in where I need to put it in. But that's not at this point. Today is just a meeting to tell you where I stand. I've also lost two fruit trees, and I've got three feet of no vegetation on a, on a five-degree incline that comes into our straight for about 100 feet. As far as the police and fire department goes, when I was on the property, my wife was an EMT as well, and both of them studied snow tires, never had a problem. As a kid, chains were used, a foot of snow, you drive. So we're not having problems, but it seems that the police department is kind of pushing for heavy salting. They actually call what they call burning it off. They came down one time with a dusting and salted three times. Just to, they didn't even plow because there wasn't enough snow. So this type of thing doesn't sit well with me, because they're poisoning my well, literally. And that's basically, I've got photographs, would welcome any of you to come over and actually see where things are, and if you like, I'll show you some photographs, but I don't want to drag this meeting out.
Questions?
I'd also like to find out how much salt the town has actually purchased, because I want to calculate how much salt is being put per foot by roadway services. And when you look at it, it's white, that's, that means they're not just lightly salting, they're coming in with, you know, full guns ablazin'. Also, the town of Barrington and Dover are having the same problem, but Dover is starting to remediate it using a brine in selected roads. I'd like to work with you instead of against you, we've been a contributor to the town over years. The desk that's in here came from digital, I bought that with a tractor trailer, two tractor trailer loads when the school was being built, and we furnished a lot of the building in here. And that was a donation that my wife and I made, oh, 25 years ago.
Thank you for that.
So we're not exactly far, we've been here a while, but I'd like to kind of retain, you know, get this thing under control before it gets way under control. Not only to me, but for the other wells that are involved, before we end up in a situation. I don't know what my kidneys can take, if it's 200, 230, or whatever the ratings are for salt, but the kidneys are the first thing that have to dissolve in salt, and that's in the documentation here. So enjoy the reading, you're, you're welcome to call me in on a private meeting and we'll talk.
Okay, thank you for coming in.
You bet, thank you very much. Oh, also, the town likes to use aggregate, but when they start throwing rocks at me that are this big, you know, it's just not a, a good situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Brooke. Name and address for the camera, please.
You bet. Brooke Schaefer, 24 Lamprey Drive. I know I emailed a bunch of information, but I wanted to follow up and try to revisit, I guess, a couple of things. First one is the E911 plan for Lamprey Drive. Back with Chris Sterndale, we had kind of deferred Lamprey due to the fact that we were connecting or had planned to connect the, a segment of road that made it a loop. So we've since done that and wanted to come back, at, at that time, we took, asked you for an informal vote, so that our names of our, names and numbers of our road addresses wouldn't change, and I think you were in agreement with that at the time. We had proposed a, a plan, which I sent in email, I hate to just throw it up there, but it, it essentially changes the name of the main road coming in, but leaves Lamprey Drive all the way around the circle. So that was really, the first piece of it was to revisit that 911 plan to make sure that, you know, that was acceptable and we could go forward with that, you, you could.
Because it, because it, so what you're asking is, can, can we move forward with leaving the numbers what they are?
In the name, yeah. Right.
So.
Based on, and you, we had, Chris had run this through, and I don't remember who his contact was, but we had a few different plans that were presented. Plan one is the one that I've emailed you that, that shows the one that he said was acceptable for her, his expert, and I don't know who that was, but.
She worked for the state.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So that was the first part.
You know, the nice thing is, the majority of the houses are on what would be Lamprey Drive. So by not changing the name, it's the least amount of impact on per resident. And then you go to the other side where the new road will be named, there's no residents for most of the way, I don't know if there is any, until you get down towards the water, and there's one, two, three, I think three of the, maybe the five houses that would be there are seasonal.
What do you mean by the new road that will be named?
Well, if we changed, if this was going Lamprey, Lamprey coming in can't be Lamprey, or that, there has to be a different.
But that's not what they want.
So, so the road from Dolph Dam all the way up to where Lamprey splits would be called something else, and we, we threw a name in there. The rest of Lamprey, as it splits and goes around the big loop, and it goes all the way out to the, the point, would not be renamed, that would be Lamprey, a big loop, the whole...
The point is, that extension that goes out to the point is the reason why we're changing the names. You agree with me or not, agree with me? Go look on Bardary Lane, go look on White's Grove, all these small extensions.
The reason it was being...
You have a circle.
Right, right.
That your circle, what you want to do is going to be the Lamprey Drive circle.
Right, right.
Right?
Yep.
And then you have the extension that goes this way, when you come down the bottom of the hill, you're going to turn.
So, so the, I don't know if you have this, I'm sorry, the, the way that the road would be laid out now, as you came to where the old split in Lamprey was, it would be Lamprey going around and all the way out to the point, one road. The other piece, which now connects, that used to be Lamprey, would be part of the renamed road. So, so it's, it takes care of, no addresses would change essentially because of that design.
So the, the new road, where does that go?
It starts at Dolph Dam where, where that breaks off.
Yep.
And it goes up and down the hill, it would end up...
To the right.
It would go to the right, where it, where it splits, that used to be Lamprey, it goes to the right, that's exactly right. Yeah, and there's no homes on any of that section at all, so zero impact to address changes. It's because I had, just so you know, John, I had presented that same plan that you're talking about as one of, one of the options, and this was the one that Chris and the team felt was the best, so.
Paul Crowe, 24 Lamprey. We've paid for this connection with our own money, and the people on the section of the road that you're talking about, even though they're part-time, they contributed to this road, because they did not want their addresses to change. So that's why, that's why Chris, you know, approved this plan, okay? That when you first come to where Lamprey splits, okay, now, from Dolph Dam till the end will stay, will be the new name. Where Lamprey splits to the left, okay, currently, it will go around, it'll be connected by the new section of the road, it will continue going all the way to the water.
So just...
Can I take and make a copy of that for anyone to have?
Yeah, that would be helpful, thank you, John.
I have a whole bunch of them, because I had been through this before.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the map too, I'm, I'm just not visualizing it.
I'm, I'm visualizing from the day that I was out there.
Take that for starters, but I have others.
And you, you...
If you've got more, I won't have to go make copies.
I know, I do, because I have a couple of different...
It's eight cents a copy, you know.
Yeah, that's right, hold on there.
It's not color.
True, it's true.
Here they are, here they are, sorry.
Okay, that's the, this is the... That's that little lollipop, right?
Yeah, that just doesn't matter, that's guys driveway.
Uh, okay, okay, okay.
Brooke, yes. Come up here, please. So you're coming in Dolph Dam.
Correct.
Right? And then you're...
That's the split, yeah.
This is where you come in, and then where's, is this where the little lollipop thing is?
So the, the little hill is here, right in, right in this section, right here. So yeah, there's a little, you're right.
That's the little lollipop there. And then, and then where is the curve that we...
It's not drawn as well, but it's right in here.
The curve that we talked about as being problematic was in here.
Right in there, you're right.
So all of this is what you put in new.
No, just the wavy section, right there, one second, and this is, this was already existing.
So that's the new, and this is what you're proposing as?
Correct.
The new note, road that gets renamed, and there's nobody basically who lives on that who would be impacted.
Correct.
Whereas you want all of this to stay Lamprey, so that everybody stays with their existing numbers.
Yes, so it'll go just around in a U and right out to the, the point.
Yep.
If the police and fire don't have a problem with it, I don't care, good enough.
Shall we run it by fire?
Yeah, uh, yes.
I mean, it's, it's, again, this is an E911, we're doing this for emergency purpose. If, if there isn't any of that, then I have no problem with it, I think it's great.
You have to come up and state your name and address and all that, please.
Pat Farrington.
You need to make sure you're on the mic in order to get the minute taker to hear you.
Okay. Pat Farrington, we've owned our property since 1989. My husband is paraplegic, he's had several problems, and they have never once not showed up at my house and taken care of it. And they choose to go down a right away when they come down, okay? The road coming off here where it splits, there aren't any homes on Dolph Dam, if they're calling that Dolph Dam, because the houses are all down on the low part of the land, and that's Lamprey Drive. And I've put in, we've put in a lot of money for it. Right now, we've lost a son and we have to help that financially, and we've put... Right now, we've lost a son and we have to help that financially and we've put money in. And if we come out of this not having that road plowed, I've had lawyers come to me. So I'm pretty upset.
Okay, I'm going to address the elephant in the room here, okay? Because when you guys came to us, right, and it was the E-nine-one-one that triggered all of this.
Right.
Right? And now you're talking about something completely different, which is the plowing.
But there, there are two pieces to it.
There are a lot of pieces to why this road.
Right.
The second piece would be the.
Road acceptance.
Road acceptance, okay.
So yes, we haven't talked about the second piece yet. The E-nine-one-one was where we wanted to start because I think we had a, an informal agreement. I think we've followed through with that plan and just wanted to make sure that, uh, you know, it was something you were willing to go.
They're intertwined though in my mind.
Yeah.
Yep. And I'm going to say something that you guys are not going to like. And that is because I went out there with Sean, you recall, looked at the whole thing. And we expressed concerns in particular about that corner.
Right.
Right? And what we agreed to with you guys was that if you guys provided a site plan and an engineering plan, then we would take a look at that towards acceptance of the road. And you guys didn't do either one of those. So that, I mean, that was the conditions for accepting the road.
Right now, we're talking E-nine-one-one, okay? Chris, Chris, they, they can't be the same.
Yeah, they are.
Because they're different because the E-nine-one-one, they were going to change the name of the road because the road did not connect with each other.
I get it, I understand.
So now it connects. Whether the town accepts the road or not, the, the road is connected. And now Chris, when he came up with this plan and agreed to it, had run it past his, whoever he talked to with the state with E-nine-one-one. Okay? So they had no issue with it when Chris was here.
This is going to be.
Well, I mean.
I have to buy. It's all Lamprey. It's what they wanted. It's more organized than the way it was.
Yeah, I'm okay with the numbering. What I'm concerned about is the, this didn't exist before, right?
Which, which one?
The, the wavy part of on that map.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the, the upper part of the loop, right?
No, just where it says proposed, a little wavy section. It's about an inch long.
The wavy right here. And that's what these guys went ahead and put in.
Right, right, right.
Okay. So by that being Lamprey, that's the same name as everything else, right? Which means then is the town obligated to maintain it.
That's, that's a second issue.
Yeah.
The first issue is E-nine-one-one. That's the first issue, okay? By accepting E-nine-one-one, that does not mean the town accepts that section of the road, okay? It just means that the road is now connected and public safety vehicles can respond.
Yeah, I, I think if you accept this nine-one-one, E-nine-one-one plan, it would be difficult not to then accept the road. It's almost like you're taking action on accepting the road by accepting this.
That's what I'm struggling with.
I don't see, how do you see that?
Yeah, well.
I don't see that.
I'm just saying, I don't think, I think you've got.
Lamprey Road is already accepted as a town road.
You need to decide what's going to happen with the road.
Yes, that, that was a paper road in nineteen-sixty that was all connected with paper.
We, we.
And the town accepted it back then.
But this is a new, new section that they're talking about.
It's not new. I've owned my house for thirty years.
It is new.
And for me, it's not new.
The, this, I think you two are talking about two different things. She's mentioning the brand-new section that just got put in. Pat's referring to the corner which we widened up to try to meet the town specs. So we, you, you're, let me say this, you're right. There were a number of plans that were put forward. The big thing that you had wanted was a survey. We did the survey. So we know where everybody's.
We, we did a lot of survey, so we knew exactly where the boundaries were of the road.
That was your concern here.
We saw a sketch. I think it was a sketch that came in, not, not an actual survey.
We had, we had the, we had a survey come in and mark the property lines.
It was, it was an approved.
We saw a sketch and that's all we saw.
That's fine, but we had a survey come in and marked the lines of where the road.
Did you provide us with that survey plan then?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's good, that's.
I know it was sent because I saw that as well, so it's, it's in the records, but we can send another copy if need be. So that was, you know, the starting point was to get the survey done. Um, in addition, you know, we wanted to make sure that, that we followed what was, at the time, the only specs that were available to us per Chris's recommendation, which was the subdivision specs. So that was an eighteen-foot road with two feet on the side.
But, but again, remember when Sean and I were out there. And the specific ask was a site plan and an engineering plan. That those were the two asks.
So I think there was a lot more.
If you, did you, you look at the email that we sent you?
Uh, which one?
Recently, for this meeting, with the pictures, with the pictures.
I saw the pictures, but.
Okay, did you see the base?
I did not see an engineering plan.
You didn't see an engineer, but did you see the tape measure and you saw the base?
An engineering plan.
One of the things that, that we found very tricky, and I'm just going to be straight out and honest, was we tried numerous times to contact Sean, who as it turned out, ended up on medical leave. And then we also tried to contact John Scruton to make sure that we could connect the, our, our excavator, our, our contractor with them to make sure that we were in agreement on the plan. We didn't have a formal written-up plan, so you are right.
But that was the ask, Brooke.
Well, I, I understand.
But, but we're funding this on our own, okay?
That was our thing. And, and we were told, you know, honestly, in this meeting back in September, we don't want to make this a science project. We're trying to make this viable for you. We understand. We're not paying a penny for it. We were told not to make it, that you were trying to help us not to make it.
We still are, honest to God.
So the benefit.
But we've done everything per se.
The benefit for the town, right, is now the emergency vehicles can go right around, no problem, okay?
That's a two-way.
And, and if they wanted to, the plows can just drive right through. They don't have to put their blade down, but instead of backing up and running over people's property or hitting trees or whatever, you know? I mean, it's a benefit to the town.
It really is. And we were trying to work with you. You're.
We, we were trying to work with you two. And, and, and we were clear in what the ask was. And I understand that you guys are putting the, the money up for this, but, but that was known all along, right?
Did you, did you look at the road before the snow? Did you drive it?
I was out there with you guys in the fall.
No, no.
Yeah, no, no.
When the road was completed.
Yeah.
Did you drive it?
No.
Has any, has anyone seen it or?
I drove it tonight.
Yeah?
Yeah, I was trying to go through, but it seems like I put a little snow at the end of it, but.
It was, they plowed it in, yeah.
I was going to plow my car through it, but then I was like, well, if I do something wrong, then it won't be too good for my car, so. But I thought it was nice and wide. It was nice and flat. The grade was good.
Specs that we were told to meet in the beginning, I, I.
Again, it's E-nine-one-one, okay? The road's connected, okay? The road doesn't have to be taken over by the town, okay? But for E-nine-one purposes, it meets the need.
I still.
Meets the need.
I find it problematic that we would sit here tonight and say, I don't want to separate the issues because I find it problematic that we address E-nine-one-one and you guys sit here today and say, we're not asking the town to maintain the road, but five years from now, somebody else could be coming in and saying, hey, why aren't you maintaining the road?
We, we would like it to be maintained.
I understand.
We told, we, we said there are two, two issues here. The first was E-nine-one-one. The second would be whether the town maintains the road or not. So you got to separate them.
Yeah, I mean, we do want to cover them both though.
Because E-nine-one-one, the road, the connection meets the need for E-nine-one-one, okay? It meets the need. It connects the two sections of Lamprey. So now there's no confusion for emergency first responders to come down. They can come down either way and, and get to where they're going. And they don't have to back up their trucks when they're leaving. They can drive right around.
I'm a hundred percent with the grants, and I'll tell you why. We accepted the town Moore's Road. And we didn't have a standard. And we said, hey, they came back and said, since we kind of proved that the, the town needed to bring it up to a standard, you know?
Yep.
We didn't hire an engineering company to engineer that road to make sure it was a standard. We just said, it looks good enough. We widened enough. It's now a town road. Now, what they're asking for is actually, we have more data from what they provided with the rocks, the gravel. If you drive it, you look at it, it's probably better than most of it, any part of that road that's out there. When we're talking about, thanks, uh, we're talking about a hundred feet of road. Maybe two-hundred feet, at the most, which is in great condition in there. I don't see at all any liability in the town of just making it all Lamprey Drive. Again, from the spec of who we're talking, this is where.
I'm curious how you were able to accept Moore Road by a board of selectmen vote. I don't believe.
No, that was at a town. It was voted at a town. It was at a town meeting.
So I believe this has to be done at town meeting. I don't believe you have the authority to accept it right now.
Lamprey Drive was already accepted.
But not that section of it.
The whole thing was accepted on paper.
As is.
Back in nineteen-sixty, it was accepted as is.
John, that, that, there was a lot of confusion about that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so just, just from my understanding, that, that new section that was built, did that exist back in nineteen-sixty? And it went, did it go feral and get overgrown?
No, no, no. It was on paper. It was just, it was just ever pushed through and people developed their houses. That's all.
So it didn't physically exist, but it was planned.
Right.
Yes.
Originally planned to be there.
There's a map from nineteen-sixty where the town accepted everything. That section was never developed for a reason, okay? So now we made the connection because of E-nine-one-one.
Just sixty years later than planned.
Right.
Whatever.
The town accepted to be clarification. Be clear. The town accepted the plan that was provided to make the lots the way they are. The town never accepted the road. That's why we had to get it. The whole road issue we went through is to get those roads from private to, uh, public. So, but that was on the original plan from nineteen-sixty was the road there. And that was accepted, but it was never actually built. That's your history one-on-one.
When we moved in, we were on, we built our address as fourteen Lamprey. Next to us is a right-of-way, which we have D-two, which we paid for, okay?
Is that that stretch that goes down to sixteen?
It's like right the between situation.
Yes.
Goes down to six, okay, I'm just going by the.
Hi, my name's Herb Bernard, twenty-two Lamprey Drive.
Could you just repeat that again?
Herb.
Just a little louder, closer to the mic. Come on in.
My name is Herb Bernard from twenty-two Lamprey Drive. The, the road itself, okay, was to be put in, according to the map of nineteen-sixty-five, was to be put in by each individual homeowner. When they bought the lot, they were to extend the lot, the road behind their lot to the next lot, okay? So everybody has done that, right? The elders have, have fairly recently built their house and we have now all put that road in behind the house. That road is, is in, built better than the entire neighborhood, right? It's got twelve to sixteen, eighteen inches of, of inch and three-quarter gravel. Another six to twelve inches of, of three, of, I'm sorry, inch and a half. Another three-quarter inch, three-quarter inch gravel is sitting on top for another six to eight inches. And then there's a covering over it. He's dug, he's, he's dug holes on the side for drainage. He's put drainage down the side. That section of road is better than most sections of road in this town. John, you've been on it. You know it. You've seen it. You've seen the work done to it, okay? The contractor did it according to building a road standard. That two-hundred feet of road is better than from the, from the hot top of, out, all the, all the way up Dolph Dam. I, I mean.
If he did it, does he have an engineering design that he used to do it?
I don't, I personally don't know if he did it by an engineering design, but the man builds roads.
So he must have had some kind of a design or plan he was working on.
I don't know. Maybe.
Probably didn't because he wasn't going to spend the money. If he knew how to build a road that's two-hundred feet, I wouldn't have spent the money. I would've just did it. The best practice of building a road that I've done if I had the experience.
Can I, I, I believe this is premature. I think we have to wait until spring and have someone look at it to verify what it is and whether it meets, you know, acceptable standards.
We've got pictures to show what it was done, how it was done, and all the course that it was done in. Okay, in each section of every time it was done.
My recommendation is we wait and have an engineer look at it. This is my recommendation.
So again, excuse me, again.
Yes.
Uh, we got two separate issues here. We got E-nine-one-one, which is the first issue, okay? And per the prior town administrator, he agreed that we made that connection, all of Lamprey, the way it currently exists.
That if the, you made the connection and it was accepted by the board, then that should work.
Right. But what I'm, where I'm going with this is that he ran it past his state E-nine-one person.
Doesn't matter. He did. But the discussion that we had was that you guys wanted to keep your addresses, that putting in that stretch of road would allow that and that the town pending the work that was done would accept the road. It was all tied together.
It wasn't tied together. It's two separate issues.
It was all tied together.
No, it wasn't.
It's not worth fighting over.
Now, according, yeah, it wasn't.
So.
Basically, I mean, we had a thirty-three, according to the maps, we needed to go, we had a thirty-three-foot path that we, that we had to use as a right-of-way, okay? That was the original plan nineteen-sixty-five. This road is twenty-six feet wide. It's, it's got gravel where none of the, none of the roads leading up to that section has any gravel in it.
So I, I get it. And I've heard all of this from you guys. My, my concern is that we have to look at it as a town-wide situation.
Agreed.
And we can't just be establishing precedents, right?
Well, Moore's Road is a good precedent.
So first of all, okay, we were only talking E-nine-one at that meeting back then.
Nope, nope.
We were.
Nope, we talked the whole thing.
No, we, we weren't.
We did, we talked.
The first step was E-nine-one-one and then.
Cause you came to us and said, if we put this stretch in.
Right, right.
And it gets accepted, then can we keep our addresses?
Right, right.
And we said yes.
You did, yep.
But it was also dependent on the acceptance of the road.
No.
Well.
You're just, no, just making the connection.
So let me, excuse me for one minute. It was, you're right, we did say that and you agreed. But in addition, the acceptance of the road was based on the petition that Chris went forward and asked us to sign. If you get all your butters to sign this, if you develop this to the, the specs that we have, which, which were really the subdivision specs, you get a survey, we don't, it doesn't cost the town a penny. That was, that was when the acceptance of the road was going to come into play.
But you also remember that Sean and I were out there and the ask was for a survey and an engineering plan.
I do, but you know, at the end of the day, we have truly done this to.
Look at where I'm coming from, right? If we have people in any part of town saying, you know, we put in this road, it's up to standards. And we don't have a plan for you or a design for you, but we know it's better than any road in town. I'm not an expert on that.
Apparently it happened in Moore's Road. I'm, I'm not sure I understand where this is different.
This was, you know, we probably dropped the ball on Moore's Road, right? Because that was the first one that came up. We have to set a standard for moving forward. I, I don't know, weigh in, Tony, because if I'm, if you guys completely disagree with me, then that's your call. I.
Well. I know one thing. You've probably heard me say it before because we've owned it since eighty-nine. That when Mike Timmelti came to the town and said he wanted to build out on the point, they said, well, you don't want to build out there. You've got to have it, you've got to have the road in front of there going over to the right-of-way to go down, because the right-of-way goes straight. You have to bring that to road standard. So he, he came to me and said, would you mind if we take some of the property and if we go and we widen it so that it's wide enough? And I said, no, go ahead. I want you to build. It's better for the town to have another house. And it's more revenue that the town is bringing in. So literally, he did it. And he got his permit to build his house and he believed he was on Lamprey. Because that was his address. His address is Lamprey Drive. Just as much as I believed when I bought my property, it was on Lamprey Drive. And for me, I love the name Lamprey because Lamprey meant something. And it's just, to me, that is, you know, he had a lot of land left in there.
One of the issues the road agent brought up was that corner. Did not want anything greater than a ten-degree. Well, in front of her house, we widened that corner. We took it out to the thirty-three-foot mark and it is less than ten-degree pitch. There is no issue with that corner whatsoever, all right? So not only did we do the hundred feet of road, we widened out that corner and dropped the grade so that it's less than ten-degree. we widened out that corner and dropped the grade so that it's less than ten degrees.
So what's.
We tried to do it according to what the town asked us to do.
What's the harm in following John's suggestion that we wait until spring, which is now five weeks away, and have an engineer go out and look at it?
This costs the engineer's gonna be on the town, right? Absolutely. 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 I'm sorry, what was the question?
Because we've put so much into believing that we're finally going to be accepted.
I mean, we spent a lot of money trying to do it with the town waters.
Except for the, the section. That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, correct.
Just to get big here, it's the two hundred feet section that we're talking about. Lamprey over there, still Lamprey over there, Lamprey over there, still Lamprey over there. We're trying to change it to make the E nine one come together. All right, so the one road says all Lamprey Drive. It's all connected as one, which meets the E nine one one.
If it wasn't the truth. Anytime involved, they've always gone out to help us.
And that's fine. That's fine. I understand that. You know, I see this in a simpler way of just getting it done. And I, I don't see the liability of sitting there of saying, like, this section of road is not gonna be in any way possibly a catastrophe to the town of Nottingham. Go look at it. It's not gonna cost, I don't know, so there's no, no one's gonna fall off the edges, no one's gonna, I mean, there's not, it's just a nicely built two hundred feet of road that makes a connection with another pre-existing road, which is the same name. I, I don't see why we're having such a discussion on, they provided the pictures, they showed what it is. This is what we're here to do. Make decisions. Now, you have the option of, I mean, again.
Yeah, we know.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm not against this one bit. I think you did a nice job, and I think it's done, and I think we should be moving on.
We even put drainage, we put a.
I understand, I saw all the pictures. I, I totally know what you did. I don't wanna see any of their expenses cost. I think it's better for what you did, and it's, that's my opinion on it, so. I'm not gonna vote for them to have to go to have CMI engineer it and for them to pay for it. I'm not gonna agree with that. I'm agree with the way we do it right now, no. Maybe this should be a board vote where there's five members on the board instead of three tonight? That might be something.
Fair.
So you can get the full board.
So, my thoughts, so I, I do see it as two not connected things. You know, just, just going back to my recollection of our last meeting. Um, I think for E nine one one purposes, I don't have a problem with any of this. Uh, and this is correct to rename the, the east-west stretch Channel Street? Is that, is that correct? So, and then, and then Lamprey just kinda swings around and goes out to the point, right? So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with any of that for E nine one one purposes. And you said nobody lives on this Channel Street section?
Right.
So nobody would be impacted?
No.
And if there's a new house out there, it'll be number whatever Channel Street?
Right.
So, um, and it, and as far as, as far as acceptance, so. I mean, I'll say I'm not an engineer, and I'm certainly not that versed in, in the road law to, to be able to decide for myself would that stretch be automatically accepted or not, although it doesn't seem logical to me that the entire stretch but that, that new two hundred foot section would be accepted. You know what I mean? It just, it just doesn't make sense to exclude that.
And it's quite frankly built better than the entire.
We got it.
Yeah, yeah.
We got it.
And that's where, yeah, and that's, well, that's why I said, I'm not an engineer. I saw that, you know, I looked at the pictures, I saw the, the, the drainage holes and the, and the, and the, the rock base and all that, and it, I mean, if my own driver was built that well, I wouldn't have to repave it this year, but yeah. Um, I mean, you know, personally, I can say good job, but I, I think it would be in everyone's interest to have, have an engineer give a thumbs up on that. And just, that way, everybody's covered, everybody's happy. Um, as far as, you know, we might wanna get an opinion about whether or not that stretch has to go on the ballot, you know, for the town to officially vote on it. What's that?
So that was the, that was the long path. This, this was supposed to be the short path, was to come to you guys with our petition in hand. And, and, but the longer path was potentially to go to the ballot, right? I think that's where John was going with.
Well, the, the board does not have the authority to accept the road. That's not even, we can't vote on that.
So the road was already accepted back in nineteen sixty, okay, the plan.
It showed on a plan.
Right, the plan, okay.
Right, right, and that, that's, that's where I'm saying it's, that's where it gets legally gray, for me.
You said, you said, right, you said you sought two points here. One, the E nine one one, and the second one was maintain the, the town maintain the road acceptance, okay? So on E nine one one, you're okay with that?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, so I think that's the first part that should be voted on, okay? And then the second part, you can pay for your engineer to look at the road and go from there.
Lamprey Drive, quite frankly, other than this two hundred foot section, right, was just a bulldozer going through, knocking down trees and leveling it. That's Lamprey Drive. Now we have a gravel base, we have drainage, we have drain pit. I mean, we've got a better section of road than the entire Lamprey Drive is. I quite frankly don't see the problem.
No, I, I understand. It's, it looks like it's really well-built, but that's not something that the board can. We can't speak for an engineer. That's why we have to have, you know, have our, our road people do it or bring in a.
Would the board accept Lamprey Drive?
We can't, that's not within our authority.
The town accepted Lamprey Drive when we had the petition, the petition article, which was voted on two years ago, and that's how Lamprey Drive became a town road.
Right.
As is. That was what they said.
And as is at the time did not include that section. That's why, to me, it's a gray, it's a gray area.
They're not gonna include that section. Why am I paying the same taxes if they do?
Oh, don't.
The cost is much more when you have to go out for other things.
Yeah, the, the taxes you pay don't have any bearings on whether or not you live on a town road. It's just, there's a lot that goes in it. It funds everything, right? But I'm just saying, I, I don't know enough to know would this automatically be included in that acceptance or not? I can't, I can't say.
Basically, we went, we went according to what the road agent told us. He, he would not accept that corner unless it was less than ten, or ten degrees is what he said, right? It's less than ten degrees, right? And it's wider. It's no longer a pitch.
And our plan had really been to connect him with our contractor all along. We were hoping that, because they've worked together before. It's, it's in the first road that we put in, and, and so our hope was that the plan would be resolved between the two of them, and they would meet all the requirements. They did speak, but apparently, you know, numerous, numerous calls before Sean was out on leave and numerous calls after he was out on leave. Just, it didn't make for another connection.
So I, I think we, I think we've discussed it thoroughly. Yeah, and, um, again, I just wanna say, you know, I'm not against what you guys are doing. I'm just trying to follow the proper way that's in the best interest of the town. That's all. So, and, and I wanna see you guys get there. I just, to Tony's point, I'm not a road engineer, and you know, even if I drive down a road and it looks great, I don't know what it's like and what it's gonna be like two years from now, or three years from now, and what the town inherits, right? And, and with all of the roads that we've inherited, we've inherited some significant issues across town. So that, I'm, I'm just being more cautious on the side of the town and going forward. That's all I'm trying to be.
Totally understand.
Lucky for you, I'll be gone in a month.
Totally understand that, and that's the right outlook, okay? But right now, we want E nine one one, and I heard from two board members that the issue is separate from the town accepting the road.
One of those board members wants to move that forward. Now is the time for them to make a motion.
Uh, do you wanna do it as drawn? I make a motion to approve, uh, Lamprey Drive as drawn from the, I'm gonna use that map uh, for E nine one one purposes.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion may be by John Moore and seconded by Tony Dumas.
Uh, John Moore?
Uh, nay, don't it, anus.
Aye, Tony Dumas.
Okay, motion passes, two to one.
Do you want me to have Sean get an engineer and review the road as soon as conditions allow?
I think that should be done. I don't know that all of the people on the board agree with that.
It's gonna cost money, so I need a, some direction, a, a.
I think Sean and his expertise should be able to look at the road and figure it out. It's only two hundred feet.
Okay, so you want Sean to review the road and bring a report back to the board as soon as he can?
I think it's the safest, safest approach. And it's not that far.
Three, three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, two years ago, we got a lot of complaints from other people in town because we weren't using engineers on our roads and our projects, right? At that time, we made the commitment to, to do things the right way. So, that's, again, kind of where I'm coming from, but, but go ahead, start with Sean.
Okay, I will have Sean, and if he thinks he needs an engineer, it'll be his call. Otherwise, it'll just be Sean's report back.
Well, Sean's report back, then we'll decide whether the engineer goes.
Okay.
And I just wanna make sure it's clear, because John's wording of that motion said to approve Lamprey Drive as drawn.
For nine, E nine one one.
So I wanna make sure that that's clear. That does not mean that the town has accepted that portion of road.
Agreed.
Okay?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
My report?
What's that?
Um, I looked at this contract. They can cancel on sixty days' notice.
Do you need these back?
Even though it's a five-year contract.
One should go with the file. One should go with the file. Do you have one for the file?
I've got one for the file, and I think the chief, fire, fire chief's here, and we'll give him a copy before he leaves.
Are, are we actually okay with sixty-day notice?
I wonder about that. I, I had not picked that one up until I was just looking closely at it at your request.
No, for the rec department, uh, no, because they can come to her in January and say, we're not gonna do it in, you know, as of March, whatever, you're, we're canceling the contract.
Yeah, so the, the terms of the cancellation, I see as a problem.
That's a problem.
I can review, I'll have the lawyer review the rest of it, but someone needs to approach the school about changing it. Would it be Courtney, or would you do that?
Yeah, I mean, if she needs support, I'd be happy to do that with her, but the, the factor of the matter is that it's gotta be before budget season, so it's almost like a year.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, they've gotta give notice, you know, sixty days before, how I would word it, if they're gonna give notice sixty days before town meeting, that they're not, that they're canceling for the following year.
I would say sixty days before the, the beginning of the budgeting cycle.
Well, sixty days before, before the deliberative session, you're really just getting into budget, so you've got most of the budget cycle still ahead. That's when the budget committee starts working, December.
Even if we did ninety days, that would be mid.
I was just gonna say that.
That would be mid-December, and that's the end of our budgeting work, and that would be quite a monkey wrench to
Yeah.
throw the select board, any future select board, so.
Right.
I would say six months, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Especially where our budget cycle and theirs are offset six months. That's middle of the year for them.
That's right.
But that's our turnover time, right?
So, you, you, you said ninety days, then you said six months. Do you wanna go six months?
He said ninety days isn't enough.
Right.
Yeah, even ninety days isn't enough, because that only takes us back to mid-December, at which point we should have the budget finalized by then. So, so I'm saying six months would be better, cause that gives us plenty of time to, to accommodate that through the budget, and also allow us to make appropriate, um, decisions regarding staffing.
So instead of without cause on sixty days' notice, it's without cause on six months' written notice?
Six months' written notice or six months prior to the next deliberative session?
Six months prior to the start of the next year. How's that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah.
That's fine. Uh, by next year, do you mean the contract start date?
Next school year, next, uh, before Sep, before September.
Okay. Well, no.
Of Sep, next year.
No, because that could be January, and that's too late.
Yeah, it has to be six months prior to our budgeting year.
Yeah.
About nine months before the start of the following school year? That would put it, at least January first, they'd have to tell you. I know that's not a lot, but, you know, the.
Oh, okay, so it'd have to be before September, which would give us plenty of notice leading into the budgeting cycle.
Before September?
Yeah.
So let's say no later than August thirty-first.
Well, no, he's saying six months before the start of the next school year. So if the next school year starts this September, it would have to be six months before that.
Oh, so that would be, and that would be March.
Right, which still, okay, we know that, well, they can't cancel in September.
Nine months, nine months before the start of the school year would give you at least the first of the year.
Unless you look at it from the perspective of they can't, once we're in a budget cycle, they can't cancel at that point in time. I mean, that's the point, right?
Yeah, neither can we.
Correct.
Once we're committed.
Correct, yeah.
So, wait, I mean. Subject to change at the option of the district on one week's notice, that's the time of vacation and stuff. The period, I'm sorry, I said it the wrong place. The term of the agreement may be renewed for one additional year if Nottingham provides written notice on it before April one. Provided, however, that this agreement may be terminated without cause and, uh, on sixty days' notice. And that's what we're trying to change, that without notice, sixty days. Uh, I think nine months before the start of the school year. Written notice, nine years.
But what does that mean?
That means by Sep, January first, basically, they're gonna have to tell you if they're not renewing for the following, they're not, if they're terminating the agreement.
Yeah, but they can't tell us on January one that they're canceling it effective this September because of our budgeting process, and Courtney will already have the resources lined up.
Right, she will, she will have just.
But not lined them up.
Well, but she's, there's continuity to the program, right?
But she'd know nine months to wind down. She'd have nine months to find another facility, wind down, or to, you know, you could just not budget for, you change your budgeting.
Yeah, but like, I mean, in terms of rent, we got a pretty sweet deal with Nottingham School. She wouldn't be able to find that for the same money. She would need more money, and, and after the budget's fixed.
But sixty days, sixty days' notice is clearly not.
This is the after-school program.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, school needs an after-school program.
But they may decide to run it themselves instead of doing rec, so they may give us notice to leave.
That's what they tried to do this year.
Right, well, the, the idea came across of actually maybe putting it out there to have private bids come in onto the thing.
Yep.
And obviously, that's not an objective thing to do, because we do it all the time, sending out, you know, gets your own town is usually not what you wanna do, but.
Yeah, but it's, it, it's somewhat different where the school and the town are both supported by the same pool of taxpayers.
Right, it benefits, I see the benefit for both of that school program and the fact of the benefit of being our rec department. Cause most of those kids that are probably in this after-school program are probably using the rec department some other way.
Yes, that's exactly the re, that's exactly one of the arguments. You're right.
Continuity.
Continuity of staff.
So here's a question. You're saying nine months to put on it for termination? Do you think the town, the school's gonna object?
You know, it's not as. It's for the school, not terminating it on us.
I know, that's what I'm saying. But they, it's their contract, so we're asking to redo their contract. Do you think?
Well, they wanna be able to cancel it on sixty days' notice. I mean, they could tell us now, we're done for the end of the year.
Yeah, that's injurious to us, you know? So let me, let me give you a. I totally understand. I was just, yeah, just pitch it to them at the nine-month time. It, it's not as uncommon as you might think to have a long notice period, like, for example, like. For childcare? Sure, it's in this day and age. For childcare, yeah. Um, also, another example, um, up in Plymouth, um, the university used to dispatch for their public safety services, much like down here in Durham. And the university couldn't afford to do that any longer. And one of the elements of their contract was that they had to give the town of Plymouth one year's notice, because they didn't wanna have to drop the, you know, their, their full-timers that they contributed to the dispatch center. They didn't wanna drop those people on thirty, sixty, or ninety days' notice. You know what I mean? I understand, I totally understand what we're doing here. So are we discussing? I understand, I totally understand what we're doing here. So, are we discussing right now whether we wanna make it nine months or a year?
Well, we're.
We just wanna make sure that we have enough notice ahead of our budget cycle to be able to plan appropriately, in terms of facilities, staffing, and funding.
Can we say?
But we need to say it in the contract.
Yeah.
So, all right, so, do you wanna say nine months or a year?
Well, we're talking, we're talking about what is the right thing to say, 'cause we're thinking through the impact of the timing of it. So, what I'm thinking is, can we say something like, six months prior to the next budget cycle, budget planning cycle, but contract cannot be canceled within the timeframe of our budget year? So they can come and say.
Of the current budget year.
Of the current budget year.
Yeah, yeah.
A, a contract cannot end in the middle of a current budget year.
Oh.
So they can't come in September and say, we're gonna cancel in March, right? They can come in September and say, next year's gonna be your last year, through your budget year.
I think the budget planning is vague. You need a date. 'Cause you plan your budget year-round. I mean, pick a date, is it December first?
Yeah, but like, our official budget cycle, like, we, we, we start, you know, in September, and, and then we have all these dates that we have to finish, but we have to get it, drafts before the Budget Committee on certain dates, and then we have to have our final copy ready by a certain date, and then run it by DRA on a certain date, all that, but, you know, the finish line on that is pretty well carved out, I would say.
Yeah, yeah, but the, the serious, the serious, getting serious line, you could pick December first, you could pick November first. I think you'd have trouble picking August and defending it. If you wanna say they can't cancel, um, they can't cancel within six months of the end of any school year, uh, they can't terminate within the, you know, or what, something or other, I mean, you need to tie it to either the school year or the town budget year. The town budget, our, our fiscal year, you could do it by fiscal year, um, you know, that they can't cancel within, uh, a given fiscal year.
They can't cancel within a given fiscal year unless given twelve months' notice. I, I don't know, maybe, maybe a year, you know? Or, or maybe it's that the contract is reviewed a year when there's one year remaining, with the decision being made as to whether or not it's gonna be extended after that point.
It would just be nice to, like, if they wanna cancel, then we finish that budget year, and all those allocated funds.
Yeah.
And then we cut it off December thirty-first.
Correct, yeah.
That's really what.
And tied to our fiscal.
Right, we can't have partial years of, of funding and staffing, and that's a lot of extra stress for the.
Yeah.
For Courtney and.
But they also can't come on Janu, or they also can't come on, uh, can they come on December first and say, we're done December thirty-first? That wouldn't work for them. Yeah.
Yeah, that's the problem with saying, within a town fiscal year, they could do it at the very end of our fiscal year for the start of the next year.
But that wouldn't be beneficial for them, because they would be mid-year, and they, they wouldn't look for a new program in the middle of the year.
I wouldn't think they would.
If they were more power to them.
It may, the, the disagreement may be terminated by the district without cause. I don't know, I'm going back to the nine months before the start of the, uh, nine months before the start of a school year, or something like that, 'cause then we've got the argument, we need to know a long enough ahead to be able to go to the budget, one way or the other, for the deliberative session, and that's why we need nine months. I think nine months is easy to defend.
Okay, let's, let's.
Before the start of a school year.
Let's try that, but I would wanna explicitly see in there that the contract cannot be canceled mid-year during our fiscal budget year. I think that should be explicit, or it can't be, you know.
Within, within the current budget year, yeah.
I'd be, I'm happy that it, that they're, it's a contract for five years. I think that's great.
Yeah.
Certainly, that's beneficial to the school, to the rec department, and to the kids who are part of both programs. Do you wanna think on that wording tomorrow, John?
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand, but if, if we're working with nine months and we're working with not in the budget year, why don't I work on something and run it by you?
Yeah, and Cor, Courtney might have some input to that as well.
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Courtney.
Okay. Uh, Chief, we're way behind. John, how much, uh?
Uh, I've got several more items here. I've got six personnel issues to come up, but I can leave, and the chief can go, and then I'll come back in when the chief leaves, uh, 'cause I've got, I've got six different, no, five different, um, we're just trying to clean up all the evaluations and air raises and everything.
All right, what do you guys want to do? Um, we could, I, Steve Sorf, I'm sorry, bouncing in and out of public and non-public, um.
One, one of the problems with bouncing out of public right now is that we can't go back into public once we, on TV.
Oh, fair enough. Chief, apologies. We'll try to get through this as quickly as possible, okay? All right, thank you.
Okay, uh, I prepared an organization chat. I've got a lot of comments from different people, and this is the latest iteration. I wanted this for the new town administrator. Kelly is working on names and email addresses to go with all of these boxes.
Why, why do we even need our approval on that?
Uh, I just wanted to make sure, if, I've asked everybody else if they had comments on it. Are there anything in here you recognize as being wrong? Like, I.
I didn't.
I, I found several things, like, uh, the fire chief mentioned emergency management director as a separate one, not under fire department. A police chief mentioned the animal control is not technically under the police, it's under the town administrator. I mean, so I had to make, I, I was trying to get all of this down, so that when it goes to the new town administrator, she's gotta.
Sure, that's fair.
Fairly accurate, and, and, and as I said, for Kelly to put names and email addresses.
Okay.
Phone numbers with this. Uh, if you don't see any issues, that's all I need. That's why I said, is consensus. Okay.
Good, fine.
Uh, ice storm cost eighty-five-hundred dollars unexpected tree damage. Um, what I would like to do is to take that out of the extra highway money, the hundred-and-twenty-nine-seven-seven-seven. I know we were planning to take the truck out of that. I think the truck can still come out of that, but, um, I didn't wanna take the eighty, I, we, we've hit upper for so many things, I didn't wanna hit upper, but I don't, I, it's unexpected, and, uh, I would like to use that highway money if the board will approve.
Sick.
What's that?
So we're talking about salt?
No, we're talking about tree removal.
Tree removal. Eighty-five-hundred dollars for tree removal in the ice storm that took all those trees down.
How many trees were there?
Oh, there were trees all over the place. That's the, that's the storm where the tree destroyed, um, Sean's new truck. And it, uh, took wires down. We had, you know, it's, it's not unusual for a thousand dollars to, for a tree, so it doesn't take many trees to add up to eighty-five-hundred.
So the bottom line is that the money has to come from somewhere.
Money has to come from somewhere, and Betsy wants to know where.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that, too. John?
I'm gonna pay for it, so what are we gonna do?
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, it would come from the Hampshire DOT money that we received. That's, only can be used on highways, so it makes sense.
Yeah, fine.
Okay. Um, uh, Robert McWiggin requested space for, somewhere in this building to set up a missing in action permanent display with a black empty chair and two flags and a plaque for, um, for missing in action. My thought is, as I look around, we have some plaques honoring those who were killed in action or served in action, and I would think just a plaque would be more appropriate for any Nottingham servicemen who's missing in action, so I thought the answer to him is, instead of a big display, we're willing to put up a plaque dedicated to any missing in action from Nottingham.
I'm good with that.
Doesn't sound okay?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Who was that, John?
Uh, a guy named Robert McWiggin, and I don't even know the spelling on his last name. I've got his phone number. Uh, if you, tomorrow, you could, actually, probably Wednesday, I don't know if I'll.
Is he donating a plaque, is what he's doing?
No, he wants us to pay eight-hundred dollars for setting this thing up, or raise the money for it, or something or other. Apparently, he's doing it in some other towns.
Is he a resident of Nottingham?
No, no, I don't think so.
Oh, wait a minute.
Wait a second.
Wait a minute.
Lead off with the important stuff here, John. I'm sorry.
As far as I know, he's not a resident. He didn't introduce himself that way, and I know he's been doing this in other towns, so I. I don't know.
To the cloud.
Yes, to the cloud. And like I said, I'm not sure if it's spelled with a G or a Q.
Yeah, table that.
Table that.
Table?
Not that we're not interested, but I'd rather see a local.
Why don't I try to get more information?
Spear, the Nottingham thing, then.
I'll find out if he's from Nottingham.
Then again, I've realized that somebody local spearheaded an idea like this.
You buried the lead there, John.
I buried the lead, sorry about that.
Uh, it looks like he's from Hookset.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, um, so, that's dead?
It's not, and again, it's not because of where he's from, but I, I'd like to support if somebody from Nottingham doing something like this.
Yeah, the local, the local veterans.
Having some, that somebody from Otis Town come take our money.
Who doesn't even know the people.
No.
Yeah.
Right, I, one thing I would like to know, if he has a list of missing, I'd like to know if there's somebody from Nottingham that's missing in action.
Yeah.
Got, got, a lot more valuable information than us handing a check out for money.
Yeah.
Okay, I told you about the subpoena. Pipes were frozen here, uh, they re-insulated. Um, I told you about the CADs, uh, conservation, we did sit down. Um, there's actually two places where Sean and I agreed it would be good to put low-salt signs, so the conservation will buy the low-salt signs. It's in an aquifer on level ground. The real problem Sean has is, salt's the only way to treat some of these roads that have steep hills, and West Lane is fairly steep, so that's the reason West Lane keeps getting salt, 'cause it's steep. Uh, EverSource submitted an alteration of terrain permit. I suspect they're gonna do something like they're doing just in, uh, Barrington, just before you get to Nottingham and, um, Northwood, uh, with the big power lines.
Yeah, yeah, they're replacing the wood, the wood towers with the prefabricated metal ones.
So the, the, if you want it, it's an inch and a half thick in Betsy's office, if you wanna look at it. Um, one thing, the Public Works Director would like an office that's quiet, instead of everything that's going on in the office he's in, and I was having to think, if you do make a move that frees up that Brit, Bridget's office.
Bridget's office is supposed to be a private office for them to meet with people.
Yeah, we thought about that, but that would make a good office for Sean, and they could make into this space a private office.
So I have a problem with that.
What's your problem?
Okay, 'cause I know Dale's in there from eight to ten, and then our land use, uh, I don't know if we'll call this, we'll call clerk now?
Yeah.
Well, and administrator?
Yeah.
Thought we had a different word, word, just fine.
Whatever, yeah.
Right, um, she's in there Wednesdays and Fridays, from like, eight till two or something, I think her hours are, which Sean doesn't work on Friday, so, or half a day. There's still Monday, Tuesday is all afternoon, I mean.
Well, he's, he is, he's, he's basically been using the, the conference meeting room as place to, like, when he's taking courses, when he's meeting with, with his staff to, to talk, or something like that, so that it's not, you know, it's confidential stuff, it's, um, it's Dale regularly is talking on the phone.
Yeah, but you have three people in your office that are regularly on the phone.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, just a thought.
My, the only problem I have is, again, it goes back to all of this work that we want to have done to accommodate, you know, a better space for the rec department.
Yep.
Like, I don't understand how all of a sudden Bridget, they're willing to give up that space for Sean, where they needed that space before, plus.
I don't think they're willing to give it up. I don't, I don't think, I, I.
Right.
I, I, even if we ask them, they might not be saying.
Right.
Sure!
But, but they're still, like, I'm still looking for what's the total cost of everything.
Yeah, and that gets to the next point. Uh, thirteen thousand, two twenty-five for fixing the heat in the food pantry in community room, with basically a mini-split on the outside. This would be heating and cooling.
I would want to see a budget, line-by-line budget that shows the entire cost.
Itemized.
Everything that's been, being proposed.
Well, by the time we get there, you might not be here.
No, I know. That's why I said I would want to see it, if I were you.
Hey, John!
The other, the other piece, I'm just giving you pieces. I agree, we gotta put it, I agree, we gotta put it all together. Um, the broadcast recording equipment for the meeting room is fourteen thousand. Um, it'd be a little bit.
From what I reason, is now, again, when you put it all together, this is now approaching to, a lot larger than what we've had. Are we at a hundred grand yet?
Well, no, but the fourteen thousand is franchise money, and you ought to spend it in here or down there, either place, 'cause you need to upgrade your equipment. Your, your AV equipment needs to be upgraded for going out over TV and everything, and.
No offense to you, John, I'm not saying this, you've been wonderful, and again, this is not offensive at all, at all, so I, I'm not presenting it that way in any means, but on something like this, I really think our new TA should be helping spearhead this idea, and getting her to think of it.
True.
She's gonna have to, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah.
Even though she's gonna do a lot, but.
Yeah.
I don't mind throwing her into the fire right in the beginning, but.
Yeah.
You know, this is something where.
I.
I mean, I'd like to see this project be done in this next course, in this next court year, to be done and taken care of.
Yeah, I've got a list of projects that I'm passing on to her. This is obviously one of them. The drainage lines under the floor, the oil tank out front, there's a number of big, big things that I'm passing on, but I'm trying to get as much of the information together for her as I can.
Yeah, information's absolutely fine. Again, we wanna see the information, we wanna see the bu, total budget of what it's gonna cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Line, AV center, this costs this, moving this heating system, line three costs this, this costs this, and, yeah.
And where the money's coming from.
Right, right.
So like, if that's coming from the franchise fee fund, then fantastic.
Yeah.
So, listen, that's a good segue to announce that, um, we have a new town administrator who will be starting on March twentieth. Her name is Ellen White. She is coming with tremendous experience. She's got ten years of experience as a town administrator in the town of Osapi and the town of Freedom. Um, she's, she's gonna be great. Really, really pleased that she's coming on board. Her contract is signed. Um, as John Moran just said, John Scruton, who's done an exceptional job helping us through this transition period, um, so, thank you for that again.
You're welcome.
I did talk to Ellen about the transition, and what she said would be helpful would be for you to plan to overlap with her for one week.
Yep.
And then, if there, you know, if there's things that come up that she needs to kind of reach out to you for phone calls or whatever, she, she will do that.
Sure.
So.
Yep, that works.
Yep. So very exciting news, and Ellen will be, uh, thrown into the fire. Okay.
Okay, so, um.
We will go into non-public.
Actually, you know, if we knock out assessing real quick, I think we're free and clear.
Oh, yeah, 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 good call, yeah, yeah, good call.
I think we're free and clear to go to.
Forgot about that one.
So, um, all right, so I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, sorry, approve the elderly exemption for map twenty-six, lot four.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, second by John Moran. Roll call vote.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Adonis.
Hi, Tony Dumas. And I'll also make a motion, uh, for the Select Board to approve the veterans' credits for map thirty-eight, lot thirty-one, map seventy-one, lot one twenty-five, map forty-three, lot twenty-four, map eighteen, lot eight, map six, lot twenty-two dash A one, map seven, lot three dash two, and map fifty-two, lot eleven.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tony Dumas, second by John Moran. Roll call vote.
Hi, John Moran.
Hi, Donna Adonis.
Hi, Tony Dumas.
All right, with that.
One minute, thirty seconds to one minute, please?
Uh, sh- sure.
Okay, thank you.
One minute, and that's it.
My name is Roger Richard. I'm running for selectment. I'm here to ask for all of your vote. Can I have thirty seconds or less than that to turn my back to you, all the respect, and just ask for people's vote?
No.
Nope?
This isn't a forum for.
Thank you. I ask everybody's vote. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you for at least coming to watch in the meeting.
Yeah, that's a.
You know what?
A lot of people don't do that.
Yeah, so.
That's a good point. Tony, take us into non-public.
Under?
Um, it would be A.
I have A. I don't know if there's anything else.
It's all A.
All A. Everything I have is A.
Okay. Make a motion to enter non-public session per ninety, RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two A.
I'm second.
Motion by Tony Dumas, second by John Moran.